You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that were nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one. Heard around the world. Sherman marches for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday night, December 12th, 2016 regular Fayetteville City Council meeting. We had a couple of guests in the audience. Representative Richardson, are you still here? Nope, just want to make sure you're recognized and former Senator Tony Rand, are you still here? Okay. Well, if you're still here, welcome. If you're not, it was great to see you earlier. This time Rabbi Eichenholz, oh, there you are. Welcome. Please come forward, lead us with the invocation. If everybody would please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance immediately following.
May the one who blessed our ancestors bless our mayor, the city council, for their diligence and dedication in serving our city and its citizens. May they be kept along with all those who have come with business before the council this evening. May we be guided to wisdom and understanding. May each of us see that we all have the same goal even when we disagree. And may we be bound to one another by our sense of striving for a better tomorrow than we had today. As the cold weather begins to settle in, maybe we find warmth in our community. May we be blessed to find success in our worthy endeavors together with our neighbors and let all those who wish respond, amen.
Let the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rabbi, tell us a little something about Beth Israel and your mission.
Well, Beth Israel Congregation on Morganton Road is the only synagogue here in Fayetteville. We are a Jewish community of around 100 members. And as 2017 approaches, we are excited to be celebrating our centennial this year. And so we have been incorporated for 100 years, which is quite a momentous occasion for our community. In this time of year, we celebrate with so many other congregations of faith through our interfaith Thanksgiving service, and we're preparing for our upcoming celebrations of Hanukkah. So we are excited that the holiday seasons of Christianity and Judaism align in sync this year. And we will be beginning with candle lighting on the first night of Hanukkah on December 24th.
Beautiful. Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Happy Hanukkah. Is Ms. Jackie Dinker here? Mr. Hassan has been awarded proclamation from President Obama to the Black Afro-American Cultural Identity Organization. And it states without exception, "A fanfare, men and women across America routinely take quiet steps to create a better world. Guided by faith, you, sir, have taken these steps in the spirit of fellowship and love. By lending your hand and support to your neighbors, you have challenged yourself to practice what you believe, not just the words, but also the deeds. And you have strived to meet life's most sacred responsibility, to give ourselves and service to others." It's written that "I am inspired every day by compassion and selflessness of the American people. I applaud you for your commitment and faith, and I thank you for your dedication to improving our community. May the years ahead be filled with continued blessings. Signed, President Barack H. Obama." Thank you, sir. Ms. McDonald, does the motion to add the items need to come before the approval of the agenda or before the consent agenda?
Mayor, you could add them at the approval of the agenda and then take your vote for the consent agenda separately. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Arp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If it pleases the council, I would ask that we amend the proposed consent agenda tonight and add items 6.09, Hardball Capital Ballpark Development Service Agreement. Item 6.10, selection of bond underwriting team for the $33 million minor league stadium. And item 6.11, the Civil War History Center Resolution of Support. It is, sir.
Segmented by Councilmember Hurst. Council, this will have to carry by a supermajority. So this time, any discussion? All right, I'll entertain your vote to add those items. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous by members present. Council, this time we'll move to item 5.0, which is the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Arp, segmented by Mayor Pro Tim. Any discussion? Sing none, council, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous by members present. Council, item 6.0 is the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Colton.
There was an item that we were going to pull on the consent.
6.08.
6.08. So, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to move that we approved the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item 6.08.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Segmented by Mr. McDougal, discussion? Sing none, council, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Mayor Pro Tim, 6.08 for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 6.08 was the authorization to access the interlocal cooperative agreement. We discussed it somewhat in the dinner meeting. I just wanted to have a further discussion just to make sure that the authorization of staff to enter into this agreement for bulk purchasing purposes will not be a step backwards toward our local and small business commitment that the city has been implementing. And so I know we discussed it somewhat at dinner, just wanted to see if we could discuss it at a January work session to get a little more detail about it.
Is that a motion to move that to January?
It is, sir.
Second.
Segmented by Mr. Moan. Council, discussion? Sing none, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Move item 6.08 to the January 3rd work session. Mr. Crisp, I recognize you.
Mr. Mayor, we have the three items that we added to consent, 609, 6.09, 6.10, 6.11. Can we get a 60-second explanation for our viewers on each of those as to what we're doing here so that our people, our citizens, understand? Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Mr. Hewitt, would you like to come and brief the viewing public on what those three items
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. As requested, the three items that were added and approved on consent, the first on 6.09 is a contract for development services that we have with Jason Frye of Hardball Capital. As the council knows, and some members of our viewing audience may or may not, we are building a baseball stadium across the street, it's our hope. And we found it very beneficial to have someone of Jason's caliber as a consultant to assist us in our negotiations, not only with the Astros, but also as we move forward, with designing a stadium and keeping it on budget, which is something that's very important to the council, as you stressed several times. So that 6.09 allows us to continue our engagement with Jason Frye of Hardball Capital for development services related to moving forward on the baseball stadium. Similarly, 6.10 is the bond underwriter. At some point in time, early next year, we will be issuing limited obligation bonds, hopefully with general local government commission approval. And we need bond underwriters to help us sell those bonds and to raise the funds necessary to construct and operate the stadium. 6.11 was the Civil War History Center Resolution of Support. As the council knows, and hopefully some members of the public, as it was published, I think, online this afternoon in the Fayetteville Observer's website, and has been reported several times since I've been back in 2015, there is a local group that has been working for several years to build a world-class history center that focuses on the Civil War's impacts and in North Carolina, not only about the Civil War before and during, but also after, and the impacts that history has even on modern-day North Carolina and Fayetteville. It's a very exciting project, and the council's support tonight says that if funding is committed by both the county commissioners and the state of North Carolina, that the city also will step up and partner with those organizations to fund a Civil War History Center being built in Fayetteville, just on the other side, near the arsenal.
Thank you, Mr. Hewitt. Did you have further questions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to emphasize, because we're 6.10, we're talking about selection of the bond underwriters. And when we talk bonds, the citizens out there get a little jumpy. I just want to make sure they understand, these bonds will not cause us to raise their taxes. Say it.
These bonds will not, on three. One, two, three. These bonds will not cause us to raise their taxes.
Thank you so much. I just want to make sure the citizens know that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Crisp. Item 7.0 is a public forum. This is a time that Fayetteville residents may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city government. Due to policy restrictions, this forum will last no longer than 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the city council on issues that are related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you are here to speak on an item that may be on the agenda later, which there are none, so when you hear your name called by the city clerk, we ask that you come to the podium, clearly state your name and home address for the record. Then when you see the lights located on the podium change from green to yellow, that's an indication that you have 30 seconds left to speak. When you see the red light come on, your time has expired. And again, due to policy restrictions, we are unable to extend that time. With that being said, Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Mayor, we had four speakers signed up for this evening. The first speaker is Mr. Steve Harper. Mr. Steve Harper. Our next speaker is Mr. Charles Matthews.
Welcome, Mr. Matthews.
To the Honorable Mayor and City Council, I'm Charles Matthews of 3618 Ten Little Court, Fayetteville, North Carolina, 28311. I request a meeting this week with the city manager, the city attorney, PWC manager, and the mayor Pro Tim. I would like to pick them up at City Hall and take them on a road trip. I will show them the problem why Big Cross Creek keep flooding. I will explain the solution. I'm also trying to avoid a class action lawsuit. Maybe not all, but some of the flooding could have been avoided. I'm sure we can solve the yearly flooding of Big Cross Creek. This trip will take approximately 45 to 60 minutes. The solution, when implemented, will save the city of Fayetteville millions of dollars. It will be implemented, it's just a matter of time. And how soon do you want the problem of Big Cross Creek flooding solved? It's a common sense thing. And at the meeting I was at, referenced the baseball hearing, I wanted the public to know that there was other options other than the congested area downtown. I must say, you have your news reporter trained well. He didn't put a word in the Fayetteville Observer, reference the city property on Shaw Mill Road. That I suggested would be a great location for a stadium close to Fayetteville State, the outer loop, and Fort Bragg. Someone needed to give this reporter a city map. After talking with him on the phone, he stated the city would never put a stadium in Shaw Heights. He doesn't know that there is a difference between Shaw Road and Shaw Mill Road. The resident of Shaw Heights are taxpayers also, and so am I. I pay over $5,000 a year to the city on taxes. This reporter failed to accurately report what I said in the newspaper. He stated that I asked about the parking and the mayor immediately answered, stating the city had over 18,000 people parking for an event. But my question was, how much property does the city own for the stadium and the parking? I had to ask that question twice. I never got a complete answer. We, the public, know the city had already made plans and deals to put the stadium downtown, apparently without much thought to the problem that could occur in such a congested area. We also knew that this was just a sham. I can just see fans now tailgating on Hay Street or tailgating in a parking deck. Ha, never happened. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Richard Colbreath. Mr. Richard Colbreath. Our next speaker is Mr. Gary Blackwell. Mr. Gary Blackwell. Mayor, we have no further speakers.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 8.01 is a public hearing. It is the issuance of a special use permit to construct a fire station in a SF-10 residential zoning district at the location of 911 Hope Mills Road. Convenient address, isn't it? Mr. Harmon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council. Being that this is a special use permit, if I can get all the speakers who are signed up to meet me at the clerk's desk so we can be sworn in.
Gentlemen, the rules state for a public hearing that individuals wishing to speak will be limited to only three minutes. Time used in response to a question from the council members will not be counted against your time. And I think the rest of the verbiage has to do with the same that I read for the public forums. When you come, please state your name and home address. Madam Attorney.
Mayor, this is a special use permit, and so there is no time limit. But I do trust that the speakers will be brief.
Thank you. Mr. Harmon.
Good evening, council. This is a special use permit request to build a public safety fire station in a single-family district. Again, as the mayor read earlier, this would be located at 911 Hope Mills Road near the intersection of Hope Mills and Ponderosa. Property, I believe, may have already been conveyed to the city, but was part of Coon Elementary there on Hope Mills Road. And just to give you an idea of what we're looking at, kind of the area in red is the part of the school site that will be used for the fire station, and then the rest will remain the elementary school. Most of the year activity along Hope Mills Road is some type of commercial or office Again, school on the property currently, and that's where a land use plan also calls for on this particular property. The landscaping for this project has already been approved through TRC. So everything on the project, basically, other than the special use permit, is ready to go. So this is just a photo from Hope Mills Road, kind of showing the area where the fire station would sit. And it would be kind of along the wood line here and right here in the front edge of the school. And then this is looking north on Hope Mills Road and south on Hope Mills. And then this is the little community that kind of backs up into this area as well. Staff and zoning commission recommend approval of the special use permit. Again, you have as part of your packet the approved technical review committee landscaping. They'll also do the street yard buffering, which is shown on there, to make this look like a very nice project. And staff and the commission recommend this because we feel that it meets all eight of the findings of fact. The city's land use plan actually calls for government uses on the site. And this can be a bit of a buffer between the existing, because of the buffer they're going to put up with their landscaping, will reduce the impact on the residential around them. Any questions of staff before you open your public hearing?
Mr. Hurst. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So that's the two conditions, because I didn't see them clearly identified in here, would be the buffering and the landscaping?
Yes, which has already been approved.
Yeah, okay.
Technical Review Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Thank you. Mr. Wright.
Yes, my concern is the fire station near a public school. At a times of emergency, trucks- trucks coming out of the station. Have we considered, is there an alternate plan in case of school buses fired during the time of school letting out, things of that nature?
Yeah, the access for the actual fire trucks will actually be down here on the lowest end, so it's the furthest point away from where the buses actually access Hope Mills Road. So, that was taken into consideration with us and DOT to try to mitigate any problems that might be faced with that.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Harmon. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our first speaker is Mr. Gary Prime.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Gary Prime with Mormon Chirso and Reitzel, with the Civil Engineers, working with Gordon Johnson Architecture on behalf of the fire chief, just here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you. Appreciate you getting sworn in.
Our next speaker is Mr. Gordon Johnson.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening. My name is Gordon Johnson of Gordon Johnson Architecture, the project architect for the project, and I'm here just to answer any questions you may have about the property of the building or the project. Wait for your questions.
Thank you, sir. Where is your office, Mr. Johnson?
It is at 654 Hay Street, Suite 4.
Local.
Yes.
Very nice.
Walking distance from here.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel, you have questions? Mr. Crisp.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes, sir.
Did you design Station 17 in Fayetteville?
I did not. Did not.
What station have you designed?
We're working with ADW Architects out of Charlotte, who's designed about half of the fire stations in the state, and that's how we got this project, so we're teaming with them for the expertise for fire station planning and development. We'll finish the station design through construction ourselves with their guidance.
Would you please make this part of this local? Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Hurst.
Yes, sir. If it pleases the council, I'd like to make a motion. Go ahead and close the public hearing.
Yeah, we'll close the public hearing. That was the final speaker. Go ahead, Mr. Hurst.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fire Station 12 is in my district and was built in 1966, so it's certainly long overdue and past time to be upgraded, and moving it from 307 Hope Mills Road to 911 Hope Mills Road puts it centrally located to the growing population in that area. So, with that, I would move to approve the special use permit to locate a public safety fire station in an SF-10 residential zoning district located at 911 Hope Mills Road as presented by staff, with the two conditions listed above that was discussed, based on the standards of the city's development code, and the application is consistent with applicable plans, because, one, the development is located in a heavy commercial district, and, two, that this use complies with the findings listed below, which is the eight findings of fact, and the three proposed permit is in the public interest, because this proposed SUP does fit with the character of the area. The special use permit shall become effective 10 days after its approval tonight by the city council, and the SUP shall expire one year from its effective date, December 22nd, 2016, if a building permit is not issued within that time, and I'll make sure that it does, Chief.
Second.
Second.
All right, and that's it.
Second. All right, that's the Hurst.
I second that.
Arp. And McDougal. When we have good things going on, there's never a lack, is there?
It's Christmas, right?
Yeah, it is. It is. Counsel, seeing no further discussion, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous by members present. Counsel, before I ask for the motion of adjournment, I do want to point out that we are absent one city council member this evening. That's Councilmember Devier, who yesterday celebrated the birth of his first child. Grayson Joseph Devier was born at 9:27 a.m. yesterday. He's five pounds and 12 ounces and 19 inches in length. So, congratulations to Jenny and to Kirk on the birth of their first child.
Mr. Mayor, also, if we may, since this is our last meeting, wish our citizens a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Arp, along with staff, and please keep our first responders in your prayers over the holidays. All right, counsel, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So, move.